Obviously the display of the fact. Now, before we start, I have a little announcement. And first of all, for those who did attend the Ruben there returns, which was, I went on the one here. A very good performance and well worth every penny that we supported it with. And I'd like, if possible, for the clerks to send a letter to the organisers, thanking them for such a good effort. And I hope you all did it. So, and the other thing is, I attended the AGM, the Census Advice Bureau on Monday, and their annual report and other documents are here. They will be in the office if you wish to.
Can I just say about that Ruben returns thing? I finished meeting today with Joy, whoever does it. And she said that they could solve double what they actually did. And they're looking at making it into a book or something now, so that people can actually read it.
Good, good. So, yeah, well, well worth, well worth supporting that. And the other item I'm going to mention is, especially now you've all got your standing orders, is that just because when you get your agenda on Friday, can I just ask you all to make sure you understand, standing order thirty five C, you do not debate items on the agenda by email. Just to let you know. Right, we'll move on. Apologies for absence.
Um, councillors, I, Daniel and...
Thank you. You have a proposal to accept the apologies. And...
Oh, dear.
Squish pill on me then. The second number to accept is Daniel. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, against one.
What sort of those people are asking you for permission on, so they can...
Declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare, if required, any disposable curie interests. They may have items on the agenda and other interests they may have on respective items of the agenda. Martin?
Yeah, it's item number seven two and number eight is just the lot next to the road where I live.
So, seven two, which is the one I think?
Eight.
Eight.
And then, um...
And that's why eight. Land's end way.
No, item number eight.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Seven, seven two, I was...
Before, um...
Any other, any other?
Before, before, um, you move on to anything else, can I ask that item number eight is moved before the planning?
No, no, no need to. They are two separate issues.
Well, no, one is to give permission, so there's no point us making comments on planning matters if the council changes their mind, which they have done in the past, and say, no, we don't want them. So, it's best to get the permission, because we've all seen the plans. And if we're...
Well, they are, even if we don't give permission for them to build them, as the landlord, we will still have to deal with the planning application, because it is a separate planning application, as with any other application. So, I'm happy, I'm happy where it is. I think I pointed you in the first one.
And also, Joy, you're gonna have to...
Even the interest as well?
Not to both of you.
Can I just think, can I make a proposal that the item is moved and if it's not moved? Because I know someone else wants it.
Make a proposal?
But that item number eight is, whether it suits you and it did get moved to be her.
No, it did.
No, no, I mean, seriously, it's before the planning, so if it's moved, item eight is moved before item seven.
But you make, you make your proposal, then they'll, they'll...
Yes, that's my proposal.
If they don't recall it for seven, that's exactly, isn't it? So, you can't, you can't.
Well, we have other things as well. Six and five.
What's, so what's your proposal?
My proposal is we move item eight to before item seven.
Is that seconded? That falls.
That's fine.
Right, we'll just get back to declarations of interest. Joy?
Should, should I say that my husband, Mr. Bill, or Mrs. Hushell has an interest in the effort?
If you've produced a report, yes.
I haven't.
Well, if you've issued a report, if you've given the office a report, then yes, because your husband's involved in it.
No, my husband gave the report, I didn't. He gave the...
Yeah, then, yes, you are, you, yes, you have, you have an interest, because it's your husband's.
Yes, that's it.
Sorry. You're always divorcing. So, that's...
It's just been... Number eight.
Joy is on number eight. Seven, two, or seven and eight.
Two. Seven two and seven eight.
Seven two, seven, seven and seven.
Or general, general, right, next. So, Martin's message would be item eight to the next, to the next order of business pitch down.
That's good.
Well, you wanted it before seven. Uh, we don't worry about any of the... We're going now. Has anybody else had any interest they feel they need to declare? Right.
Yes, yes, we've all...
Right, we'll move on then. Item three then is minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday, the twenty sixth of September, two thousand and eighteen. Is anybody got anything on page one?
Oh, yes.
Oh, got it? Yes?
Forty three eighteen.
Yep.
The installation of the gates that we're present. I thought that we agreed that we would repair the gates, not replace them, and put in the two barards.
No, we agreed to replace and, and two barards.
Okay, maybe it's just my memory is playing tricks. I thought we, I thought we discussed.
Some people did discuss repairing it.
It's all right. I thought we had, we had agreed to move the meeting to last December. Martin, did you?
Okay.
Page one, page two? Page three? I move. Do I have a second to accept the minutes? Martin, are there all those in favour? Oh, would you?
Yeah.
Yes, that's all right, that's okay. Right, I, item four, decorations by the public, that one I'm turning. Item five, Royal British Legion Lamp Post Pocket Project. Council agrees to allow council to put up and remove lamp post poppies that were purchased last year for the twenty eighteen remember was parade. And if you're to lead up this one, you've been just...
Yeah, the council bought poppies last year and we put them up. We had permission from highways. We've already got the permission from highways this year, that's, no issues there. But just to clarify, what, the clerk, the advisor, the council needs to formally approve that a councillor or anybody can go and do it. And one of the stipulations by highways was, is that we should pay contractors to do it. If we paid contractors, I think then they were starting bogging. Selling applications and stuff, so that's why we're getting calls on volunteers. There you go, that's what it is.
So, basically, because of our standing orders, councillors are not allowed to carry out work or inspections of sites without proper permission. I, I, I would, really, because this is gonna be an ongoing thing, isn't it now? I wonder if there's some way we can just, for this particular item, whether we have to need to amend standing orders or whether we can have it as an ongoing thing.
I think it's sort of thing that we should probably bring up at the AGM when we do appointments and things, that maybe a certain working group, maybe promotion publicity working group, who have a lot of activity in this area, see you for lunch. It may be at the AGM, because at the end of the day, we don't know who should be standing if the next council. But I would certainly say that we should, I should have thought about it this way before this point. So, I think that if we, we read this theme and then probably put it on to the AGM or the point to cover that a working group has got permission to do certain things with appropriate dynamic risk assessments, blah, blah, blah.
Martin?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with these. The, the matter of the standing order, the way that was put in was never intended to stop this sort of thing. What it was intended to do was that councillors are not allowed to go and inspect on their own and make repairs or things like that. So, I would, didn't think that this actually needed to come to council, because otherwise you would be saying that we need permission for people to put chairs out, put bunting up and all sorts of things. Perhaps even the Christmas tree and the fallen, you know. I think we're gonna have one this year. But the other thing is that if I can just correct something, we didn't actually purchase them. We made a donation. And I know that because I was initially involved with discussing this with the lady before I hadn't kindly took it on. And I just feel that it's, that it would be appropriate for the council to consider making a similar donation this year, because to me it's a bit like reusing a paper poppy by reusing it. They never sell, they ask for donations. I gave a donation for a t-shirt today at Tesco, Royal British Legion. So, it's, that was all I wanted the council to consider.
Okay, well, we could, we could, we could look, we could, yeah, we can, we can bring, we can bring a paper back.
Yes, I think it would probably be a bit late now to make a donation yet. I mean, anything to do with the poppy project, naturally, it's always a donation, sadly, always a right. But to all intents and purposes, the council paid forty, fifteen and three pounds, so forty five pound here, the major donation. At the end of the day, this is just to seek permission to put up some, they are the useful poppies.
And everybody else is...
I mean, the thing is, I have come back to the council and said that we need to buy some paper lights. So, I hope you can, can you make a donation to Alan?
Yeah, I, I would like to say, um, thank...
One is titled, this one's a download, it's not the law.
Oh, I, I would like to say thank you to the groups and the ladies, some of our houseband, that have actually knitted those poppies, because I've examined them very closely before it rained on Saturday and afterwards, and they're, they're absolutely remarkable. The knitting is superb, it's taken them time, they've donated it all, and I think it's absolutely wonderful. And I feel very upset when emails arrive that are denodatory to this. It's like the poppies, because a lot of people made those poppies. I know that the W R D, I know that other groups did. And I just think it's wonderful that people have put the time and effort into producing these things. The castle grounds look absolutely amazing. And I actually think it doesn't harm the plastic poppies that we've got these knitted ones. And I think it's absolutely wonderful.
Can I propose that the council grant permission for council poppies a bit more time? You make a proposal seconded by Zoe, all those in favour? And just before we move on to the next one, I collected the two horseshoes from the poppy project the other Sunday, and they are both in the office. If you want to have them cabinet, I made one of them.
Why have you got two?
Um, one to the Baptist church, one to the main church.
Oh, right.
Because apparently there's a memorial one in the Baptist church.
Oh, is there?
So, that's what the council...
But there's also, there's also a one memorial in the hospital as well, which is a one for one memorial hospital.
Right, I... Moving on, item six is gritbeds and store, right, the purchase of one gritden, sort of, or... Listen.
Um, while you've already been caught, um, the policy is, um... Even if, um, even if you grant permission tonight for us to purchase a gritden, our Royal County Council still have procedure that they go through and the criteria, so that they might, they might still turn it down.
Uh?
I know, and the other thing I was just gonna say is which you will be discussing on the nineteenth. Obviously, we're gonna have to budget for this in the future, especially after the wins we had last year.
I was very interested, I'm actually not sure where this road is, but I'm sure somebody will enlighten me where this road is. But last, last winter, our road is on a hill, we are on top of a hill, and there are several elderly people and infirm people who live in our little area that has no streetlights or anything. And I regret the council to ask where, you know, we could get grit from if they come and grit for us. You know, you can go and fetch it. And the fetching would be like almost a mile away.
So, you think you grit it?
Well, I didn't know how you did it. I mean, I didn't...
I've got the council. You've got, you've got your...
I've got it now, yes, yes. But we're over this road that they, they want their grit in.
That's a southern place.
Southern places is off, um, it's the first set of estates where you come over the railway, over the, on the ring road, it's the first estate on the left, it's...
Oh, it's the, the plastics.
It's the one called the dead councillor's estate.
Oh, well, the school used to do it.
Yeah, um...
No.
No, no. Southern part. Where? Am I wrong?
What's that?
No, no, you're just... Because I'm, I'm a million... Schofield, Southern and, and...
Tabras. Tabras up there.
Tabras up there, yeah.
But that's flat, that's flat.
That's called over the road.
Well, it's flat.
It's, it's off the, it's off the, it's off the badass.
It's a little hump.
It's off the badass.
Off the bike, oh.
It's off the badass.
Anyway, can I propose that we...
The last question was... This policy that was drawn up in two thousand and ten, and it's the first time I've seen it, and it concerns me, because we, we actually have a gritden in the road I live in, and on a slope, I've scattered salt. Now, no one ever told me when I lived in St. Louis Crescent that I need to seek legal independent advice before actually using it. So, I'm just wondering...
No, actually not.
How up to date this policy is, whether we should get it looked at by some legal people? Because if we're paying for them now, and that surely we must have some responsibility, or we should be, or we should be having some notice on the gritden, use it your own grits or something. Because...
We have to cut our own grit from all this distance.
And then, to be honest, it seems a bit bizarre that we'd expect, not personally, but that a resident is expected to pay for legal advice before they use it. It just seems bizarre. And I just wondered if it needs revising, because it's like two thousand and ten. And it's eight years old, isn't it?
The, the only thing, there's two things that come out of that. First thing is, is that we did eighty things which are not on the agenda.
Well, we are, because it's, it's past the...
We're gonna get gritden, not have legal, so that's a separate issue together.
No, but before that, through...
Secondly, sorry, I was talking actually. The second is, of course, the eighth, I thought that we were looking at probably proposing a seconding before we started talking about things.
Look at that, if it's not moving along. Yeah. Right, you have... We move, like, probably propose that we, we agree this...
Oh, you have...
Yeah, then the council will decide whether it's worth it. Seconded by four, all those in favour? Two others? Oh, no, sorry, and again?
No, because I think, excuse me, Shannon, the point of order as well. I'd like to point out, I was discussing something on the agenda, and I object to being told that I wasn't.
We're not discussing legal matters, quickly.
Well, we are, we've been presented the policy, and when we make a, it's a policy...
So, what I'm, what I'm just suggesting is that I redo the policy and bring it back to council after I've taken advice from, um, highways.
Yeah, that's fine.
You help with that, Martin?
Yes, thank you. But my back's against because of...
You, you are against. Oh, one against.
One against and one standing.
What am I gonna do then?
Right, item seven is planning.
I don't think they're gonna block that. Not, not this type.
No, 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 not, not the port.
No.
Maybe the tent.
Too cold.
Hey, hey, that's camping, throw the tent, fill up, fill the box. Right, we'll deal with the first one, which is triple eight, which is standard L W C at the allotment. And it's a closed site, and this is, um, sorry, birdie road.
So, this is where the Royal House Community Trust is?
No.
Not the road.
Oh, no, sorry.
It's where we had the issue with some overgrown pinnings and parking, wasn't it?
Oh, that's the little ground, what is it? Because it was actually in the middle of the allotment.
No, no, that, I think that's to show you when it proposed, it probably is in the middle of the...
And there's just the...
What it doesn't show is that people live opposite.
Not if it's right in the middle of the allotment.
No, the proposal is that block, isn't it?
But it's, to be honest with you, it's gonna be no different to having a house in a septic tank. It's a, it's a close system, so...
Is it just one toilet?
How many do you want?
Two, actually, at least.
What?
Because I don't want a unisex toilet if I have the lot now, what with the ladies, what with the men. I've got it under the fashion.
It's a long...
They're still in Europe, Mark, so unisex is okay.
Well, two then.
Right, let's, let's deal with what we're going for, because they're only asking to put, like, with one. Maybe, they might, I mean, we've got no internals. No.
So, didn't we advance last time? We were asking for information for how they're gonna...
Yeah, well, that will come on at the, on the other item, this is a pure plaque.
Oh, all, all of them, yeah.
What's it built with?
Uh, it could be block, I should think.
Would you like it?
I would, I would, I would think it'd be green block.
It says here, grit built, there's grit, there's grit work, grit work walls.
And a flat roof here.
Yeah.
And that is actually a very nice allotment now.
Uh, it's got a twenty eight thousand meter shallow dug septic tank.
And that's, that is huge.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's only for a house.
That's a huge septic tank.
Yeah, that's...
That'll be the smallest in getting a house on. They call it springing in, aren't they?
Can I propose that one?
Yes, proposed by Anne, that we accept. Uh, seconded by Zoe, all those in favour? We approve that one? Martin's against?
Yes, it's...
Oh, that's standing.
I wouldn't want that.
All right, sorry, shall, shall I pass it? Who's in favour?
I can have it still shut.
In fact, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
Martin's against? You've only arrived here. Martin's against, and one abstaining. Right, well, the next one, which is a standard light toilet, Willow Crescent. You can do this one.
This one, I know.
I think you're, I think this is, it's under the same, same, same building, it's, um...
Neither, neither of them are particularly aligned for where anybody lives can sort of see them. I mean, they'll be in the distance.
I, I, I mean, those that went to the planning application for the Brook Road, um, site, may remember that there was muted that, that gentleman, the landlord, had given the society money. And I think that's where this is all coming from.
Well, that's just the same feeling, isn't it?
Yep, just the same. Anybody got any problems with that one? No? Proposed by Anne, seconded by Joy.
Names denied.
I think, tell Angie in favour, all those in favour?
Yeah, yes, Joyce!
So, that's, same again, again, starting?
No, he was abstaining from that one.
No, I'm against.
Against. Abstained?
Residents in my world are having enough building work down here.
Right, next, do you want to do the next two, one as well? The O eight eight nine. I'll be there.
Seven, no, that's the kitchen, seven, that's the kitchen, the seven, isn't it?
No, O eight eight nine, is the O gas, the O gas.
The extension to housing, obviously.
Is that, I presume that's the same, or is that the same?
I think I've lost it.
That's a lot, that's a lot, hang on, just one moment.
Seven, seven.
Seven, seven, yeah.
Yeah, which is O eight eight nine.
Are you, you're looking at the...
Yes, is that the house and knows where she's going?
Extension to housing, obviously.
Extension to house.
Was it, they've got a building, haven't they, on the...
It's to house.
Yeah.
It's to houses.
Oh, I see what it is.
Because what they've got down there, they've got a, they've got a hut, for a better word, haven't they? Yeah, a lot of the society stuff. And this is just going on the back of the hut, really.
Yeah.
The housing, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a extension to house. Yeah, it's a combination, yeah.
Just a combination of house.
It's a, it's a house it. I'm not smart, it's a toilet, we're going to have a house.
And Chairman, did we not officially move that item, please?
No, I can tell them in any order I like.
Indeed.
Yeah, trust me. I'm trying to help the clerk out here.
I didn't want to get you in trouble.
No, yeah, I don't. I didn't know. Any, any comments?
Can we see the plan? Is it, same as the other two of them?
Well, the main difference is this one's, that one is attached to all the existing concrete block buildings.
There's existing building, and it's going in the end block.
And that's a horrendous building.
There is, yeah.
They're useless.
It is what it is, isn't it? Comments? Is this not the one, or we just got past that one, where we were waiting to find out what they were gonna...
This isn't, nothing to do, this is, they own this land, this is their own allotment, nothing to do with council.
Oh, no, I thought we had that toilet, then, we've never gotten one already.
Right, so it's proposed by Anne, are we any agree? Seconded by Joy, all those in favour?
Anything?
And one abstaining.
I have to say that, interest.
The best allotment has an interest. It looks quite good when we walk.
Right. This is Joan Tyler, and O one eight four, remove redundant rotten plywood to sun canopy frame from shop front, fifteen High Street.
Yeah, I did, that's not that way.
I don't mind that either.
That's interesting. But maybe it's early.
No, it's not ours' fault, that's how, we have the, the thingies doing it, because I've...
Oh, do you, really?
Yes.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah, it doesn't do anything for the...
Well, that's, if it's redundant and it's wrong, then you have no issue. Proposed, we accept that.
Proposed by Anne, so...
Oh, yes, what they're gonna put in?
Instead.
No, just have to remove it, that's all. Seconded by Sally Anne. Any comments before I take the vote? All those in favour? What's unanimous?
Plywood doesn't suggest antique, does it?
If they want to replace it, I have to come back to my permission. So, O nine fifty two is Mr. Haywood, Mrs. Haywood. Proposed infill extension to dwelling five of the...
What's it fitted with?
Probably for...
Is it this one's really, has a bit of...
It's bigger than that, for us lot. Oh, yeah, yeah, I said this in, oh, we're gonna fill it up.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
Can you guess where it is here?
It's gonna stick out the side there.
Oh, I see, the top, the top, the top, all that top picture. The roof only gets halfway across, and on the bottom picture, they've gone all the, they've gone all the way across for whatever that... So, that's, it's there.
It's to a garage, isn't it?
It's just a small extension, mate.
Yeah.
They're just taking it on the back.
To the back, yeah, back.
It's a side of it, it's a side.
It's not an extension.
Well, unless they don't have a similar thing or not.
No, no, no comments. Any comments?
Not if they're not in the...
I'd prefer to accept.
Proposed by Anne, yes, agreed, approved, and seconded by Anne, all those in favour? Yeah. That's unanimous. O nine eleven, Mr. Sentence, remodelling an extension to existing full bedroom property in associated development, eleven Capless Park Road.
Associated development, exactly. Associated development. Don't move it, don't move it ready yet.
There's a gate on...
We've locked the main window.
Well, we're not happy about the gate on the public eye, are we?
No, when you look at the, where that window is, it will be blocking out their light, uh, but...
I don't think you have any right to write, to write to light now, do you? Thought it was...
Well, no, we shouldn't, yeah.
Now, not like, you don't have a right to view, yeah.
Well, a lot of those houses are being divested, and you can look at some of the windows, when I believe you could then. And they, some of them just get to the point where they've put film over the windows that look into, they literally, some look into neighbors' front doors.
Oh, I see.
See, now they can see.
Yeah.
But when you stick something there, they can't.
Well, unfortunately, you don't have a right to view, but you have the right to light.
Yeah.
The only thing they could object to is if they weren't facing windows.
They're not.
They're not, they're, they're going to look at a blank wall round it, which is not nice, but that's what...
What's it, what's this space to the left?
Any other comments?
What's this, what's this gate that they're going to put in on to, exactly?
Yeah.
It's just like they're putting a gate at the main, at the, at the front of it. And so, why, is that, am I, this is Caponas Park Road, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's going to be onto the dirt track, surely, not on the road.
Although, you know where I live, like in a road, it's on the corner. Just, you know where the two roads meet, you've got South Street.
That's Caponas Park. Which is, which is the private, the private road.
Oh, the private road, sorry.
Is it, is it opposite Edmunds?
Yeah, 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 you're right, yeah, it's a dead end, isn't it? Yeah, I know where you're going.
I, I think it's very close then now to their property.
See, that, that gate, does, does, the thing I'm going to say is, where the gate's going to be, at the bottom of that very large tree, which I presume that's the gate they're showing there sliding across, does the next door neighbour have to access through the same gate to get to their property? Do you, do you know what I mean?
I don't know, it's...
Just go back, I see.
The gentleman that lives in that house is the bloke that owns the pond park, so whether he uses that dirt track to get round to the pond park.
See, is, is, is that the gate here that's going to slide across? And if so, does that neighbour have to go through here to get access? Because you can't, you can't block somebody's access with a gate. It's, it's against the law. So, I don't know, it's against the, especially on the highway. It's a shared access in private road.
It's not a planning thing, it, it becomes a, a...
Well, no, no, we have to...
It becomes a civil thing, and it's a nightmare if you only...
But we could make, we could make a comment that we're concerned that the neighbour's access may be restricted by the gate. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think it's too close to their house now to be honest.
Right, what do you, what do you want to say? Go on, let's have a, let's have a proposal. It's absolutely on the, on the table.
There is a complaint from a neighbour who states two things, they're close to...
Three things, I think it was.
Was it three things? And I, I can see what they're saying.
Would you, do you want to say, uh, we as a council would like to uphold the objections of the residents of the data? Is that what you want to say?
Yes.
Anybody got, anything else they want to say? Not happy with what I've just said?
No, that's fine.
Do I, are the... Yes, yes.
If we're talking, um, access to people's property, surely we'd need to see information from the survey to know that anyone's access isn't being obstructed anyway?
Well, on, on a shared drive, I speak from experience, for nearly forty thousand pounds of experience. Um, do you put a gate upon somebody's shared drive, and you can't close it? Because, uh, that's, so, but, I mean, that, it is, like Martin, Martin's quite correct, actually, that is a, um, legal thing, a civil thing, but if the, I think we should just bother the neighbours and agree with them.
I'm just thinking, you know, in the interest of thoroughness, we'd need to know for definite anyway whether anyone's being obstructed in the first place.
Can you flip back to the photograph scale, because it came by...
They wouldn't be, so, um, they wouldn't be seeking planning permission for the gate. So, we're, we're considering the...
No, it was on the application, wasn't it, the gate?
Well, I suppose it's shown on the front, but you don't need planning permission for a gate.
There is another thing that's got it always...
That would have benefits to show.
Are they applying, applying for all this building around that original bungalow?
Only the red bit.
So, before you know it, they're...
Only the red bit. Yes, it's, 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 one on the left hand side is current, and on the right hand side is what's proposed by the applicant.
It's the bottom one.
All that shaded area is original, Joy.
Yeah.
The green bits, the usual, I think, and then all the other bits are extra.
I didn't know whether it was green from the sand.
Two win, two, two windows in, two, three dormer windows, or, or, that'll just windows in on the side, and then put an extension on.
The, 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 the red line there shows the extent of the extension. The red lines here show that they're going to put some windows in there. These are roof windows, so they won't be overlooking. All this is existing. And this, I think, is meant to indicate the fact that where they could look out the window, they could see whatever they could see. They won't be able to see that anymore. But as I said, you can't defu, refuse me of loss of view, I think through loss of light. Now, what, is that impacting loss of light?
I think that's the supply to impact. Loss of light, rather.
Light comes normally down, isn't it?
Not in the winter.
It rounds in.
Not in the winter.
Always been for...
But it also depends on what it says in the deeds, because I had a problem, and Peter said I had no right to light.
Right, well, I, I, I propose that we can be, uphold the neighbour's objections, yes. And is, is that seconded?
Yes, yes.
Sally Anne, all those in favour?
Yes.
Four, two, three, four, five, six, seven, those against? One, I've stayed in with that.
I'm staying in.
I'll send you a group. Thank you. Do I have to? O nine fifty, Mr Smith. Single story and first floor ex, single story and first floor extension to the rear of the dwelling house, one hundred and ninety-three Brum Road. Oh, I see.
He's already got the garage, and he's just put it on the top of it, round back.
I think it might be that.
I don't know, it's...
You didn't even see any photos, that's all I've got there was, right, okay, that's all we've got then.
There was a proposed floor plan now in the other tab, you know, from that old... There was one tab.
What? Yeah.
Yeah, I thought there was a tab at the top, is that not a tab at the top?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's not, uh, not very good for the floors, I mean, actually, it's the roof, and, uh, got a couple of chicken pots in it.
Oh, there is photos.
Hang on, shall I, shall I move it, shall I move it?
Thought I seen photos. Yes. I thought I just dreamed.
Do us have a quick poll?
Oh, that's nice.
So, there's the, so, what? Single story, first floor extension.
But, but you don't like those, that's an improvement already.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to the rear, and it looks like they've got quite a lot of space.
Yeah.
There's probably there's not a site plan showing where six of the property is.
The extent's far enough out, so...
It doesn't look like it's going to increase the size of the footprint, either.
No, it doesn't, no, it's just going, it's going up over the garage, isn't it?
Yeah, yes.
Comments, proposal then?
Yeah.
We approve, proposed by Sally Anne, we approve, seconded by Martin, all those in favour?
Yeah.
You know the rest?
Yes.
Right, um, O six seven two, listed building. This one isn't, uh, uh, Cooper's, Fairham Cottage, double bedroom kitchen, single story, rear extension, create new kitchen, dining room, twenty-nine...
I'm a bit confused now.
I did, no, so I did send some...
Oh, this is them, this is them, Old Walks Cottage.
But it's not, except that it isn't.
But it's still old, though.
It's actually not red.
It's still very old, that's the point.
It's, it's, it's an eighteen century cottage, but Geoffrey Hudson was seventeen hundreds, so he may well have lived in a, in a building on that site, or in the area. But he didn't actually live in that cottage, because it's younger than he is.
But it's got the blue sign, isn't it?
Yeah, but there's just marionette on my reliefs in that cottage.
Oh, it's a class, this one, I understand.
We're not going to get any tourists now.
Go and take wood packets.
Oh, I think, I think, I think...
Well, I, I'm shocked.
I saw it, nothing happened.
I'm shocked that they've started altering things before they've had permission to have it.
They always do, they do.
What's wrong with it?
They, they, they do what they want. They were not aware that, they, they were inexperienced and were not aware that listed building consent was right, and they have actually had a really good look at the interior before anybody's...
But I, at the same time, it is annoying to me, Rob, and council, council did nothing when all the stores paid that money for it.
They, they sent somebody straight down, and they, and they started working, and they sent somebody again straight down, and stopped it.
It took a long time, preventing, most of the home was a back...
The, the, the back, now, the west elevation has proposed.
Century.
With wide old doors on a, on an historic building.
No way.
See, I haven't worked out where these magical engine of construction are. If I'm, if I, I'm being serious, this, this bungalow, or whatever it is, this that cottage, is not as such as historic it, um, importance as everybody initially has been misled to believe. And also, it is a, a badly placed, um, a building in much need of sort of support. And I think for anybody to want to live there, they're going to need more than what is probably necessary. But the thing is, it's hidden at the back of that extension, isn't it?
Yeah, but perhaps we should think more about bringing tourists into the town, and that is, what is it, an eighteen century? Which is, so, no, we're not going to change that.
It's not, it's not a tourist attraction. I mean, you're not promoting, you're like, you will go through the back, and we don't go through theirs, and we're not a tourist. You know what I mean, it's...
Well, that's a good...
You can only ever see the front, sorry, Joy.
What, what is important, I think, is that we should support what is being proposed. That this site needs to have proper archaeological exploration before they start to do anything. And that when they are working on the interior of the cottage, that they need to be following the guidance of the conservation officer. So that the features that survive in the cottage are, are maintained, because they, they are eighteen century, they're, they date back to the seventeen hundreds, it's about as old as they get. But, but the house has to be livable in.
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Um, and, and, I mean, I, I know, I, I know the cottage well, I know what the kitchen was like. If I'd have bought that, I would have been thinking of building something similar. And, and, and you cannot necessarily build something at the back that's going to look like the rest of the building. The, the, there are two ways of doing it, you either build something that looks like it was a part of the original building, which is a, a faux thing, an artificial thing. Or you build something in good modern architecture that actually contrasts with what you've got originally. And as it's on the back there, I, I don't think that would be a bad thing to do, but...
But you should look to see what's underneath, though.
But they have to do, yes, they have to do the archaeological investigation.
Martin?
The interesting thing about the archaeological thing is the fact is that they've already demolished and already dug out. So, I don't see what benefit that is. But I do, I, I, sorry?
You don't know.
No, but they've already dug out the back.
They haven't.
They have, they've demolished what was already there and dug it out. Um, I, I visited the lady there when I first heard about the statue that was in the garden, so I know what was there before, it wasn't in keeping. So, I don't object to them, you can't see it from the road, but all, all I would be concerned about is keeping the...
Okay, but, but, I mean, we, we seem to agree that we want, we want something to be done there to make it livable. But, and it's a big hut, so we need to decide what our comment is about the big hut.
Well, we fully support the council's approach in ensuring that the archaeological elements are now visited and appropriate care and considerations given to the future protection of what archaeological value is left.
In the cottage, and, and that the area, the area that will be covered by, the, the new kitchen is bigger than the original one, so how much they dug out, we don't know. The, the original kitchen, the sort of kitchen they've taken down is on the site of an earlier building, of an earlier extension that was there in seventeen eighty-nine. But it was rebuilt in the nineteenth century, so what they've taken down is not, not old.
Not underneath it, certainly.
But underneath it.
So, that, that would be considered under the archaeology.
But are they happy with, with that? And I think, and I think they will improve greatness, this, this high street is flowing to play pedestrian.
I'm sure that, that's the only one you're now...
Don't, please do not wire the handle.
Yeah, so that's, that was a proposal that they sort of kind of stepped forward, I think. Are you proposing that?
No, I want to say something. Well, I'm aware from what I've read, I don't know if it was on what was sent to us, but they have to have wooden window frames.
Correct.
You can't have plastic. Now, that extension to me has plastic written all over it, double glazed plastic doors.
It's a very good point, actually.
So, you can't have that, we want to know what materials are.
However, the existing building, I, cottage, it actually wouldn't.
Yes.
The extension.
But the extension could be, you know, I mean, I was a bit gutted when I walked by the, the per opposite now, because what they've done at the front is there.
Yes.
Is with all that metalwork, that actually, to me, takes away a lot of the character of what the white line is, but...
Well, I blame the county council for this, because they're not really keeping up to date with all these things.
It would be better to...
Um, I do worry about any work getting done to the front of the house.
Yeah.
Given the, the width of the road outside there, they're going to have to start blocking it off, or, given the fact that cars park directly behind it, opposite the, um, dominoes. It's going to cause an absolute nightmare down there. We'd need to have some sort of caveat in there, if they are going to caveat any work on the front, either you have to get behind that...
Well, because loads parks, and loads park, and you get the...
Exactly, and you, we think you've been after, after a train race.
Well, to, to be, without your respect, while they were working there, they had three man's parks on the, on the single yellow line.
Yeah.
All day, every day.
There'd be more room now that, um, the flash up.
Paul?
I was just going to say, it, it, it might be nice, actually, the, the extension is very different from the actual cottage.
Contrast.
Got to be more contrast, and, and a bit sort of glaze as well, you know, it's going to be nice and light in there.
If you look against it, it'll just go through.
Okay, I think, I think we've captured most of that in there.
But the archaeological reports, yes.
That, that the, uh, it's done with, uh, sympathetic in regard to the archaeological, uh, negotiations, observations.
Is Mr Cooper is going to be the owner occupier of this building, or is he the developer?
No idea. He's, 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 he's put the plan application in.
I think he's the developer.
Well, then, I'm sorry, but, and it, it, it shouldn't pass it, because he started before he should have done, and he stood up at the back garden before he should have done, I'm against it now, then. If he was the owner, I might consider it, but if he's the developer, I don't know.
Just, just, just before we move on, I'm going to ask Alan, I'm going to put it on the spot as a county councillor. Does, does the county council have any redress against these people? Or is it just a case of, well, we're slightly on the...
Well, no, even, even from our point of view, we've had numerous, um, occasions where we've gone to, we've had retrospective planning applications, where people have gone ahead and started and done the work. Um, but at the end of the day, what happens is the county council, like the town council, like those councils, try and work with those people, because for starters, a council to go along and say, right, demarche all that, it can become a legal battle, and no council wants to go into it. So, what they do is that the, I, I think that report that was came through from wherever it came through from, and also the county council's approach, is to be as sympathetic as they can. And that's why I'm feeling that the building at the back, although different, complements the fact of new and old. And you're all right, Alan, but as long as the front is pretty much left untouched, and the wooden windows, you can replace wooden windows, and there are carpenters that make them to let this happen, so it's...
Now, it will work, so, they, everybody needs to work together, so, yes, it, it does come across as, we shouldn't change anything. But if you don't change it, it will get, it will, I mean, it took, it used to sell, didn't it? Okay, I mean, all right.
Yeah, but just say, it, it would be actually, uh, good with the proposal there, that someone would move in and use it as a home, you know, at least they'd look after the front bit of it.
But it's the developers that's doing it.
Okay, so we've got that, that's the proposal we've got.
Uh, reference to wooden windows at the front. Um, you have to have a certain decibel rating to actually make that livable anyway, and if that's going, that lorry's going past, it causes a hell of a lot of noise going past.
But they, they can, but they, they can make double glaze, because I used to live in a, a fourth August house in Heckington, and we had, uh, double glazed units, but they were all...
In, in, in some of these windows now, because of the restraints of what wood and the, maybe the framing here, bear in mind, these walls are probably like this thing. Um, you, instead of having the standard twenty-four mil, but we have your hour glazing in our houses, you can get, uh, narrow glazing now, which is like less than twelve mil or something, but you still get the gap in the wall of it, so, so, yeah.
There, there is original glazing, but you can still end up with the existing...
Obviously, on that level, you're just living the extension out of that, isn't it? I do feel I, I haven't been merciful enough with the, the traffic problem this could cause. We, we've all seen the nightmare after the, the barriers come up, and the cars have gone all the way to the town. And if you've got that, we both like, you've got...
I understand, I, I think, if, if they, because, I think if I remember the regulations correctly, if you're going to block more than half the highway, you have to, you will have to go with the road closure and traffic lights. But that'll have to go to the county council, and this cottage has had a corner of its thatch taken on the Sunday.
Well, it is, it is thatch anyway, before...
Okay, so, oh, right, very quickly.
Can I, um, while I was putting things together on it, obviously, you want some sort of comment to go to the county council, is that we've asked that, you know, I know things are going on, that the conservation officer really does pay attention, like they did with, um, Flo's house. Because everything down to the detail of light switches, it never came to council. But what I would like to say, and I think it's important for me to say, is that I'm quite pleased that as a council, we're taking interest now. Because when I first came to this council with property in the town, I was told many years ago, probably about two thousand and ten, what's it got to do with us? So it's a positive that we are showing interest in our town.
Okay, so we've got all that, we're fine. Yes, it's all good after watching the lady.
So a lot of archaeological groundwork we need. And the interior to be sensitively done.
That's all there is. It's quite a stodgy proposal that you've got there.
Could we ask that they, maybe they work on the front, because it has been looking shabby with the boarded up door for a long time. Visitors do go to it, whether it's Hudson's cottage or not, it's on the heritage trail. And over the last summer or so, it's looked dreadful for visitors.
No, seconded by Anne. First by Anne, seconded by Anne. All those in favour?
You haven't got your hand up.
Why not? Two, four, six, eight, four. Are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
You went again.
Right, let's move over it. O six twenty one, revised plan, proposed conservation and alteration to the existing. Oh, yes, it is the bacon bank, because they want to turn it into a deli, don't they?
It's the one, yes, Otis.
The old Westminster.
It's that one.
That West. The old that West, we had to be there before.
And also, I just reminded them that you actually did pass it.
I mean, it's a good, I think, anything that gets.
We've got the river on its side.
Wow, that's much better.
So this is.
I'm going to my sick if I go over there.
So this is, this is, this is.
This is the old, you know, Otis down Mill Street. Yeah, they wanted bigger premises.
Well, they're good Otis.
They're going to stay both open, I've heard. But Almeda are going to have two shops.
Oh, lovely. You don't have to give them the trip, they're better.
No, this is going to be on the front.
I want to go over to the back, I've got four.
Thank you. I heard that there is part of it that's, what's it called? Joyce did tell me, but I can't remember. No, no, historic in some way.
It's always got an LVA, so it's a building.
Yes. So, so what have they got to do then? What's the bit that's, that they want to do?
What would they change from the last? I didn't see the last application. What's the amendment?
They said the fringes, because I've never seen that fringes before.